Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Time to begin our Planning Commission meeting for this month. If you'll stand and join me in the invocation and flag salute. The invocation will be given by Commissioner Baker and the flag salute will be led by Commissioner Davis.
Let us pray. Lord, we ask your guiding hand on the deliberations of this commission. We ask that you protect the troops at home and in foreign lands. Please watch over us as we leave tonight and guide us through our daily lives. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Address the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hatley.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Item one would be the approval of the minutes of June 8th, 2015 meeting. Do you want to have any corrections or additions, or do I have a motion?
Move the adoption of the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and second of the approval of the minutes of June 8th. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Item two is the visitor's section. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address the commission about a non-agended item, please step forward at this time. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three. Hear request by Scott Wilds, property manager for Lisa Plaza, for consideration of review and approval of the signage for Lisa Plaza Shopping Center as required by the design, plan, and unit development for Garth Brooks Commercial Park Phase Four. Is there someone here to address this? You state your name and address, please.
Scott Wilds. Address for the record, or my personal. 3,000 Trails Inn, Norman, Oklahoma.
Thank you, sir. You want to give us a synopsis of this?
Well, we've submitted the package. My apologies if we've been a little novice on the process to this and kind of have a better understanding at this point, but we've just submitted our landlord package, which would include the wall sign that names the center and the pilot sign up front, which includes the name of the center and various spaces for the tenants on there. We haven't set any kind of tenant regulations on there. And I've said basically they would come before the board here to submit their signage. Our plan is to, in this process in between, to kind of homogenize some of the sign process so that you will be seeing similar signage when it comes through.
So basically, you are reducing the number of signs but increasing the size of the one main one?
Correct. Yeah, we're about four foot over the limit, seeking a variance with that.
A few more square feet.
Yeah.
And I understand that there will be seven slots on this sign?
Correct. Correct. And we're going right, we have four tenants, one taking two spaces, so there would be a total, we would just combine the signs for those two spaces.
Okay. So you have part of it already leased out?
We do. We have four, or three, four spaces leased and pending on another one as we speak.
Mitchell, you, you as a staff, do not have any problem with the increased size of the sign?
No, we do not, sir.
Okay.
The city planners' comments are in there as well.
Okay. Any of the commissioners have questions for this gentleman?
Does this preclude signs two and three that you could have had?
That's the other lots that are there. It's just our lot with the Leland Plaza as a developer of that lot. They don't own the other spaces.
There'll be, there's another frontage lot, and then there's one large one in the back that will eventually have a sign on it of some type. But these, this gentleman doesn't own them.
That'd be a separate development.
Further questions? Anyone care to read the draft motion?
Mr. Chairman, you might make sure there's nobody in the audience that wants to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address this signage issue on this property? Thank you, Mitchell. Would someone care to read the draft motion?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Okay.
"In the case of the PUD application for Garth Brooks Commercial Park Phase Four, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings. I move that the submitted detailed sign program be approved with the following conditions. Condition one, no further freestanding signs be requested for the center. Condition two, tenant wall signage be brought back before the Planning Commission for review and approval."
Second.
Have a motion and second. Now, is there anyone else that'd like to address this? Call or roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Look forward to having you in town. Item four, the request by Crafton Toll for consideration of a preliminary plat for River Mesa Two, Point, I'm sorry, for River Mesa Two. A tract of land situated within a portion of the northeast quarter of Section 16, township 12 north, range five west of the Indian Meridian in Yukon, Canadian County. Without reading the rest of this legal, it's basically north, south of Wagner Road, and it is west of Yukon Parkway. And there is currently a first-phase development going on, and this is a second-phase preliminary plat. Is there someone here to speak to that? Yes, sir. Say your name.
Good evening. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, 214 East Main, Oklahoma City, here to represent the applicant. And this basically is just a reapproval of a preliminary plat a few years ago. You all approved the original preliminary plat at the same time of the zoning. We did construct the Phase One, but since then, it's been more than five years, so the preliminary plat has expired. We've not made any changes. It's the exact same thing, just minus what we've already built. And so with that, we'd ask for your approval.
How many more lots, house lots will this be?
The remainder is 124 lots.
But that's not what you're asking for tonight, is it?
The preliminary plat has 124 lots. Obviously, the next step we will do is we'll come with the next final plat, whether that's 40 lots, I believe.
Okay.
But in order to proceed with the final plat, we need a reapproval of the preliminary plat,
which is the purpose of this application. Questions from the commissioners?
Hey, Mitchell, has anything changed in our ordinances or regulations since that was put in, or?
No, there's no changes, no. I do know the engineer, the city engineers were requiring him to review the drainage.
Drainage, okay, good.
Make sure it's still in compliance.
Good deal. That always seems to be the key issue, drainage.
Other questions? Someone care to read the draft motion on this?
Mr. Chairman? I can once...
No, I'm going to get the motion to the floor first. I knew I was doing it right while I go.
I'll read the motion.
Okay.
Excuse me. "In the case of the application for preliminary plat for Wizard River Mesa addition submitted by Crafton and Associates on behalf of Manco Enterprises LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the plans and attachments cited in the city report. I mean, I move that this item be approved."
We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Now, is there any discussion or questions from the audience or the planning commissioners? Any comments? Step to the microphone, please, sir. State your name and address.
James Powell, 958 Dover Mansion.
Okay.
We live next to the field.
Uh-huh.
I was wondering what kind of right-of-way is that going to entail onto our property? And is there going to be sewer hookups? And what kind of things are going to be done to our property to, I guess, hook up to the new?
There will be a street in through Smoking Oaks addition. There is already one hooked up in there, and there will be an additional one to help with the movement in and out of the addition. As far as sewer and utilities, I'm sure that's all being handled by the staff. They'll, they regulate all that and inspect it, keep it up to current.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, a question about the drainage and the street going through.
Okay, sir. If you'll state your name and address.
It's Ronnie Short, 970 Dover Mansion.
Okay.
The water we get draining through our neighborhood now and the, you know, just the traffic that's going to be going through the neighborhood, there's not a through street on our street, so just don't understand why our street's being a through street to try to get out of the neighborhood. There's going to be a lot of traffic dumped in our, on our street. If you're talking about that many homes going in right, right in that area. I mean, where the field's at.
Well, the streets are always, if I'm not mistaken, always designed for future advancement or future growth and on that field up there. At some point, all of us that live in Yukon have streets that hook into other streets that creates a lot of traffic out. There'll be possibly...
Well, I could see it if it was a street that went straight out into Yukon Parkway, but since it's, I don't know.
I don't, there's not any open land there that would go straight through to Yukon Parkway, is there, sir?
No.
Okay. Mitchell, do you have anything on that?
I think what he's asking and talking about is Dover Mansion right now is a stub street and it stops at the property line. The applicant is actually extending that Dover Mansion all the way across through the development eventually. And it's for fire department circulation.
Yes, there has to be more than one way in and out for the fire department.
I understand that. I just, you know, we just talk about development. They show, you know, a lot of land plots and everything, but, you know, it doesn't really show us actually what's going on, what's going to be going on. Is there at some point where they'd be showing us all the building?
When he comes back for the final plat of how many ever lots they're going to do, they'll have a drawing for us to show how many lots are actually going to be developed. There're going to be cul-de-sac streets backing up to Preston Park. And there won't, they will end in a circle cul-de-sac end in there and not go into Preston Park, but, and then they'll come back down to the exit over in Dover Mansion and/or out to Wagner Road.
Yeah, I just got a granddaughter, and, you know, it's pretty nice not having a lot of traffic on your street. That was my biggest concern. I didn't, you know, five years ago, I don't remember us having anything sent to us where we could go talk about this. But water drainage is also an issue, you know? We get this last couple of rains.
Yeah.
You know, and they build that little thing that's supposed to hold water. I've never seen water in that.
I don't think any of us have ever seen this kind of water we had.
Yeah. All right, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Soder. I live at 974 Dover Mansion. I was just, I also live next door to Ronnie, and I was also concerned about the street being opened up. You know, one of the appeals to that neighborhood was the fact that it was a dead end. I have a child who has autism, and so he likes to run out into the street, and it's kind of nice now because everyone knows him, and it's a safe environment. So, of course, I have concern about that street being opened up.
Absolutely.
So I was just curious on how it was going to affect us as well.
Obviously, it'll be, it'll be a change for all of y'all on that street, obviously.
Well, and I'm with Ronnie as well, because, you know, it's not a through street. I mean, if you go down our street, you still have to turn right and then turn left to get out to Yukon Parkway. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of odd the way that it's put there.
To choose that one.
Right, because if you go straight down, it's a cul-de-sac at that end. So, I mean, it, it's just kind of odd, the design, I guess, of the whole thing, so...
Sir, are you, can you answer her on that?
In terms of, well, at least in terms of the street stuff, I think one of the things Mitchell's mentioning and which is common planning and good practice is connectivity between subdivisions for emergency vehicles, those sort of things. Those two streets that stub into River Mesa were both designed originally as collector streets anyways, so obviously, the plan would be that when this property developed, those two streets would connect as collectors to connect those subdivisions, which obviously connect back to the arterials, allow, you know, pedestrians, even walkway paths as we build the sidewalk so that there's interconnection between subdivisions as well as vehicular, but predominantly as well for emergency vehicles. So that's, like I say, when those subdivisions were developed, they stubbed into us. I think good planning and actually your code as well as your emergency management, I think those streets have to connect.
But, Mitchell, did I misunderstand you? Did you say there was going to be a road out to Yukon Parkway to Dover?
No, this connects to a current stubout street for Dover Mansion.
They're existing stubouts, which, so they're there for future development to connect to, but then obviously, each of those subdivisions connect back to an arterial. So that way, we have an arterial connection.
I know there's two, Rain Tree and whatever the other one is down the street there.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, it mimics exactly the preliminary plat that was approved before.
Okay.
So the street plan is exactly the same as the original?
Exactly.
Further comments? Questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call or roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Item, thank you. Item five is to hear a request by MacArthur Associates Consultants for a preliminary plat, a tract of land being a part of Lot One, Block 19, Canadian Heights addition to the city of Yukon. It's lying in the northwest quarter of Section 29, Township 12 North, range five west of the Indian Meridian, and has meets and bounds in here. This basically is the property that fronts on Garth Brooks. That was the Hairy Bears Yukon Mining Company for the ones that go way back. It's that piece of ground that they're asking for a preliminary plat on. Is there someone here from that corporation? Is that okay, Mr. Attorney?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. Russell Kent, address 3,033 Northwest 63rd Street, Oklahoma City. I'm here representing the developer of the said-mentioned plat, Pop Holdings, and it's for the proposed construction of Popeyes Restaurant at the lot at 1205 Garth Brooks Boulevard. And we have to request approval of the preliminary plat. There is one direct ingress from Garth Brooks Boulevard. That's an existing paved road that enters, and we will be reusing that existing entrance. No additional ingresses into the site will be constructed. The preliminary plat includes no modifications of any existing street right-of-ways or property lines. The only item would be a variance that we requested last week at the Board of Adjustments regarding building setback from the property line. The proposed building will be slightly closer than the city code allows.
So it's the exact same lot? I thought there was, you had them add something to it.
No, this is for Popeyes. What we, what he's talking about, the state of Oklahoma took a 50-foot piece out of it in 1966, I think. And for the setback, the far setback, they've asked for adjustment in that setback so they don't have to have another 50, which would put them way back. So that's what he's talking about. He asked for a variance in that 50-foot.
Right.
Okay.
And a setback about like Long John Silver's probably Taco Mile, about that far back, which is still quite a ways.
Correct. We're, we're about 120 feet from the central line of Garth Brooks Boulevard still.
Okay. Okay, questions from the commissioners?
Are you going to tear down the building, or?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That building will be removed. The existing pavement will be removed. Be a new 3,000 square foot restaurant.
Did we get that in writing?
Yeah, because it's on the record now, right?
Sure. I've got plans right there, I think. That's the intention.
And the, the lot will be repaved because you had to take your life and your car in your hands when you...
Yes, I've driven on there a few times. Yeah, it'll be completely repaved, new concrete pavement, parking for 32 parking spaces, and a drive-through for the restaurant, and a new dumpster pad. And we will, it's immediately south of the Raisin Canes.
Yes.
It's either just about to open or just opened, so we're going to be utilizing the developed grades from there to drain the site, onto that site in a way.
Just plan to have the usual circular traffic pattern?
Yes. With respect to the drive-through itself, it will be clockwise, no, sorry, it'll be counterclockwise direction, and the parking will, will be two-way. So you can have two-way traffic with the parking, and then the drive-through will be counterclockwise.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is this going to be a corporate-run Popeyes?
I believe so, yes. I believe so. I know that they do have a policy where they franchise. My understanding of the company is it's initially corporate-run for the first year, at which point it's going to be a franchise opportunity, but I don't know the details of that.
I can't resist it. We're going to have chicken roll.
Yep.
Chicken, Garth Brooks to chicken roll.
Be interesting.
Because you're two stores down from the Colonel.
That's right.
And a half mile down from Chick-fil-A.
Yep. Be very interesting.
Okay. Is someone care to read the draft motion?
I'll read this one.
Okay.
"In the case of the application for a preliminary plat for Popeyes Canadian Heights, Sixth Edition submitted by MacArthur Associated Consultants, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be approved with the following condition. All staff requested revisions noted in the staff report, items four through six, shall be incorporated into the plat design prior to the submittal of a final plat."
Have any problems with that, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there further discussion or questions from the audience? From the commissioners? Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item six is to hear a request for review and approval of a rural residence ordinance. We met in a study session a week or so ago, all four of us, and staff took us through a proposed rural residence ordinance. I was, I've been on, in city government for a long time, didn't realize we did not have one. But for us to develop what land is left in the Yukon area, we need some type of control and a system for the developers to build homes on larger tracts of land, possibly acre to two-acre tracts, that are left within our corporate city limits. And this ordinance that will be proposed to the city council is what we've come up with. Further comments, Mitchell, or?
No, Mr. Chairman, unless you have some questions for me.
No, we pretty well hit this pretty hard for about hour and a half, two hours the other night at our study session. Unless the council, any of the commissioners have questions or comments.
Overall, I think it's a good plan. Something we've needed a while.
Anybody in the audience want to comment on this plan or what we're doing? Okay. We've heard, we've had the requests for the reviews and approval, so do we have a motion for approval on this? We'll be sending this to the council, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We'll be sending this with a motion to approve or not approve to the city council.
I'll recommend approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second approval of our rural residence ordinance to be submitted to the city council with a motion for approval. Is there a second? Did we have a second?
Yes.
We are ahead of a second. Okay. Any more comments, questions? Call or roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Okay. Item seven is new business?
No new business, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Open discussion. I'd like to congratulate the city, the Parks Department, the staff, council on a wonderful Fourth of July celebration again. Just seems like we get more and more people in there every year. It was really fantastic. Anyone else?
No, I just echo that. It was great. We were there. I went there with my middle son, so, and he had a blast.
Yeah.
And some friends.
The staff have anything for us? Cindy or Mr. Attorney?
We got something from the audience, I think.
I'm sorry. Step to the microphone.
My name is Sean Howcomb, the owner of Physical Therapy Central. We just opened up our clinic on 800 Garth Brooks Boulevard, right down the road, right across the street from the middle school in Leland Plaza Shopping Center. And I was told to be at attendance at this meeting in order to vote upon our sign that we're actually putting up on our building. We were in the process of getting our permit in place last month, and we just barely missed this meeting. And I was told by John over at the building over there, and also Kathy Johnson, Operations Supervisor with Development Services, that we needed to go through the special process of voting upon it because it had a PUD in place for the property. So that's my reason for attendance today in order to vote upon that. The city does have copies of our sign on the building, dimensions in place. It's a PTC channel letter sign, LED internal lighting, under 50 inches long.
He's going to have to be on the next agenda.
Yeah, because we, we don't have, we've already passed new business item. We do not have any descriptions or anything. It's not on our agenda, so we can't really vote on it tonight.
Right. I mean, and that's something that's been told to me that I, it was going to be on the agenda today by Kathy Johnson, also by John at Development Services. And, I mean, I'm not sure why that's not on the Planning Commission, why it's not on your agenda.
It has to do with timing. We had to approve the first signs. We didn't have enough time to get it all approved.
Is there anything that we can do as a planning commission for these tenants to have to come before us with every single sign that wants to go up there, each seven, the way it's stated?
Well, the applicant originally, if you remember right, didn't want to give us any details for signage. And the whole idea of a PUD, they have to be similar in design at that time, so they added into the PUD statement that time that each sign would have to come up, so we would be responsible for making sure they're consistent with that development.
Is there any way that staff can just approve those and not have to bring them before us?
The current way that the PUD is written, there's no way.
I mean, we are the first tenants in the property, and Scott up here is the landlord, and so, I mean, we're going to set the precedence for all the tenants in there, and it's something that we've had direct communication with Scott, the landlord, also Terrence, the owner of the property. And I'm just, I'm a little disappointed that, I mean, I wasn't even told that my attendance here was mandatory, but I'm glad I came by because I'm not even on the agenda. And understand that we've been in business, we've opened our doors for patients June 1st, and it's very hard for doctors to send their patients to us when we don't have a sign in place. And, you know, this is something that's been very important to us, and my discussions with Kathy and with John go back three weeks ago, and I had multiple discussions with their office saying, everything is in place, correct, before this next Planning Commission meeting? And I was told, yes, on more than one occasion.
Well, there's multiple reports that have to be done. The PUD statement is the document was done by the ownership.
Correct.
At that time, they did not want to give us details for that signage, so...
In terms of what the sign needs to look like?
The signage needs to look at, the size of it, the color of it.
The materials that can be used.
The lighting.
The materials. We have sign ordinance very detailed. And I'm sorry, sir, that government moves slowly sometimes, or it doesn't all hit at the same time, but he has, staff has just told us that it, it was a timing issue, and it'll be on the next agenda. Will...
So nobody, so technically, nobody could have had a sign up on that property at any time until now, until today, when it's been clearly stated already what the signs need to look like?
We're working on that, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, that's, again, very disappointing, because when I'm told as a business owner that everything's in place for this meeting coming up, and I've been waiting three weeks for this meeting, and I've got patients that are having a hard time finding us, these are local doctors referring patients to us.
Well, sir, you know, we, we work with the applicants. This is an unusual situation. We want the ownership that owns this center to kind of give us some direction so we don't have a sign that's backlit, then we have a sign that's made out of letters and then we've got one that's flashing and blinking.
Understand that.
So we want some similarities. They maybe don't have to be exactly. But there's no size given, there's no color given, there's no backlit, frontlit. You know, we need those details, you know, from the ownership.
Or from the ownership of the whole property?
Yes, so it's all consistent because you've got seven spaces there that could have different signage. And the whole idea about a PUD is all similar.
Didn't we just do something like that in the area to the west of the hospital out there?
The Commons, yes. Has similar signage, similar.
Similar signage deals that they had to come before us with the size and construction material of their sign.
Yeah. Is that not something that, I mean, is that something that Scott can chime in on? Because he, he's been involved in this process.
Well, we're going round and round tonight. It's not on our agenda. We're not even supposed to be talking about it.
I just have a question of timing with this, but because we haven't put those parameters in a definition as of point, if we did that, that would assist them in not having to do this again, or all our tenants coming through.
I, I think we need to talk right after this meeting if you'd like to come over here.
But the next meeting?
No, we'll talk before you leave tonight.
I mean, I appreciate you guys hearing us on this. It's just, it's just something that, I mean, I'm a first time business owner in the healthcare world and I know in terms of patients being able to find a place in order to receive care, it's important. So, I mean, I'm just trying to look out for our patients best sake and especially doctors in the area that are trying to refer to us. So I appreciate you guys listening to us, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion among the commissioners? Okay, our next meeting will be August the tenth, meeting adjourned.